This is Michael O'Reilly.
No, Mike. No, somebody still has on the phone there is Jack Souza. Who's that?
Seventy-one eighty-two Main Street Mitch D'Esso.
Yeah, you can't go into executive session, Mike, now.
Oh, we're not going into executive session yet.
We're not? Okay.
Just mute your phones, please, though.
Yes, sir.
This is Michael O'Reilly. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Good evening. Today is June the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, and it is now seven seventeen. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission in to order. In order to confirm those members, staff, and participants present and that they can hear me, I will be asking each participant to identify themselves. Members, when I call your name, please respond. Ambrosi.
Ambrosi's here.
Maiini.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Westland.
Westland here.
Anici is not here, correct?
Correct.
And Schneider.
Schneider here.
Ron Schultz.
Here.
Cantorius.
Here.
Agresta.
Agresta here.
Stroud. Invited speakers. Barbara.
Here.
And I think that's all the invited speakers, correct?
Correct.
All right, I do declare that we have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. So a copy of today's agenda and all related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website for public inspection. This is a public meeting and is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section one of the Governor's Executive Order seven B dated March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, using GoToMeeting. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information. Notice is hereby given that only two hundred and fifty participants may access this remote meeting. Access is granted by the technology provider on a first come, first served basis. It's not anticipated we'll exceed this limit, but if we do, we will have to adjourn the meeting and go to another technology. Please take note of the following: This meeting is being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to the public and that members of the public may listen or view to this view this meeting anonymously. This meeting is being recorded so that when we ask you to mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, please do not say anything. And the recording shall be posted on the town's website within seven days and made available within one week to the public. We will follow parliamentary procedure. However, we do have special rules. Please mute your microphone. Prior to speaking, please identify who you are, your name and title. Please do not use the chat feature. Okay, ground rules. We'll now go to the first item of the agenda. Let me cover some ground rules first. I, as the Chair, the Acting Chair, will introduce each matter on the agenda. If a vote is anticipated, I will ask for a motion and a second after introduction of the matter. Or upon motion, I'll invite each member by name for discussion. After all members have had the opportunity to speak for the first time, I will repeat the invite to all members in the same order until no further comment is heard. Please hold your comment until you are recognized. Everyone will have the equal chance to speak. Upon conclusion of the discussion, I will call for a vote on the motion, if applicable. Take other action. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Next is general participation. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak during general participation, please announce yourself by name, one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, before you go to that, you need to seat for the vacancy of Chair, of Bill Porter.
Okay.
Uh, next in line, I believe, because Dominic is not here, is Ron Schneider.
All right, Ron Schneider, you're seated. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak during the general public participation period? This is a period when you can speak, but not about anything that is before the commission or anything that might become before the commission.
Hi, my name is Jake Axel. I'm the owner of Fifty Cambridge Drive. I'd like to speak.
All right, um, in that case, let me read the guidelines. Commission welcomes public participation and asks that the speaker please limit their comments because they're requested to first state their name and address for the record. Speakers may offer objective comments about planning and zoning matters and land use-related concerns that you'd like to bring to the commission's attention. We will not permit any expression of personal complaints, defamatory complaints about the commission, members of the Planning and Zoning Department, or against any person connected with the Town of Monroe or any other individual firm or corporation. Speakers are not to comment on any suggested, proposed, or pending applications before the commission, except at a public hearing, which we are not having tonight. No discussion is permitted by any party of any matters related to pending or ongoing litigation. The Chair has the discretion to limit comment time. Generally, three minutes are given per speaker. The Chair may allow additional time. Written statements are always welcome and are always provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission members. A meat replies to questions or concerns should not be expected at this meeting and will be provided at the discretion of the commission. All right, so now we'll go ahead. You would like to discuss something that is not before the commission. Can you just identify yourself one more time with name and address?
Sure, Jake Axel. Um, my business is at Fifty Cambridge Drive in Monroe. I live at four A Cherry Lane in Westport. And the only person I know in the commission is Will Agresta, who I think quite fondly of.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I don't know if this is germane. I didn't see it on the agenda. I wanted to bring up some concerns that I have about my neighbor at sixty-four Cambridge Drive. It's my understanding that the quarries permit has expired, yet they're still operating. And I think several neighbors and I are very concerned at the operations, the fugitive emissions that we're seeing from their operation and as well as concerns about material going in that has been done without a permit. When I went through the process, I thought the town did a wonderful job of making sure that I would live up to my obligations and comply with the rules. And I hope that the commission takes as strong a position with every member of the community and make sure that we're all playing by the rules, that we're all acting responsibly. And I hope that they live up to the terrific job they did with me and take a very strong look at my neighbor and make sure that they are living up to the expectations we have for every member of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Axel, for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a general comment? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, this is Georgia. We did receive some written comment. I'm not sure if Will or Rick have had a chance to look at it. I did receive an email at about five o'clock today that they asked to be included in public participation. Let me just pull it up. Will, do you want me to go ahead and read it, or do you want to go through it?
Hold on a second. Did you email to me?
Uh, you were c-c'd on it.
Yeah, I've received it too, uh, Georgia.
Um, yeah, you can note, you can put it up if you want.
Do you want to read it, Georgia?
Yeah, let me read it to you. So it's, um, the email is from Peter Metropolis of Baycap LLC. Um, and he said, "Hi, Georgia. Attached are two photos taken today and a receipt dated six eighteen twenty for the purchase of material from the Rockhead Quarry at sixty-four Cambridge Drive. Also attached is an updated violation complaint form with today's date. To the best of my knowledge, there are no active permits at the sixty-four Cambridge site. Steal and export of any material from the site is a violation without a proper current permit. So I'm respectfully requesting that the commission consider cease and desist action of all activity on the site until the proper permits allowing such activities can be issued. These are these documents, photos, and information with the Planning and Zoning Commission during the public participation portion tonight on my behalf." Give me a second. I will pull up the pictures so you can view them.
Okay, thank you, Georgia.
We have one picture here that I uploaded. We have the receipt that he was mentioning. We have second picture of Jeff leaving. Finally, we have an updated complaint form here.
Okay, thank you, Georgia.
You are welcome.
Did we receive any, did we receive any other written communication from the Mad?
That is all that I have.
All right, then we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Bruno.
I call to make a motion for an executive session to contemplate the commencement of legal action to protect the town's interests, please.
I have a motion for executive session. Is there a second?
Second from Ambrosi.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. I would like to go into executive session to include all members of the commission, the alternates. I would like to include Wick, Rick, Will, Barbara, Sarah, and Georgia.
We would, we would leave out Sarah.
All right, we'll leave out Sarah then.
Poor Sarah.
Georgia is now going to delete everyone except those people that I mentioned. All the calls, I believe, will have to call back.
Correct.
Do you want to give them, do you want to give them instructions, Georgia?
Sure. So I'm going to remove everyone except for the people that Mike just named off. And we're going to lock the meeting. So you will then go back in any public or any representative. You will then go try to log back into the meeting and it'll basically hold you until we release from executive session and then it will add you directly back in. So if you don't mind, give us about two minutes before you try and log in again, just so I have time to get everyone locked out of it. Um, and we will welcome you back hopefully in a, in a little bit. Okay?
Okay, great.
Mike, it's gonna take me a little bit to do this. I have to do them individually.
Yeah, no problem.
Barbara. While George is doing that, are we supposed to turn the recording off as well?
Uh, yes. During executive session.
Okay, I can do that also. All right, I just want to double check. Is there anyone else that's calling in? Any commission members that came up that are calling in from a phone separately? Everyone's on their computer because I'm gonna delete everyone out of here.
I'm on a phone.
Who is that, Bruno?
Yeah.
You're, but you're on your app on your phone? You didn't call in separately?
No, no, I'm, yes, correct. I'm on my app.
Okay. All right, everyone, take a little scan. Let me know. I think it looks right. Does that look right to everyone?
Yeah.
Georgie, you're, you're two things in meeting two, right?
Yeah, I can't delete one of them. I don't.
That's fine.
I'm going to lock us. And I'm gonna stop the.
This conference will now be recorded.
Hi there, everyone. We are out of executive session. Um, we just ask that anyone joining us mute their microphone.
All right, everyone's back.
Let's just give Sarah a second. Oh, there she is.
My assistant, and this will be here when you catch a fish. I'm telling them.
You understand that? My job is busy. We're trying to find a fish, goddammit.
And when he catches a fish, I'm telling all you guys in Monroe.
All right. Let's mute everyone.
Should be good to go.
All right, we're coming out of executive session.
I make a motion to direct the Z E O uh, to issue a cease and desist order on properties sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive for violations to the permit on or before December tenth, um, March tenth, two thousand and twenty.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second to direct the Z E O to issue a cease and desist order in the property sixty-four Cambridge Drive during any discussion amongst the commissioners. And then I will call the roll. Ambrosi. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Maiini?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Westland?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. So it seems to be unanimous.
Michael?
Yes.
Can you correct that vote, please, and maybe redo it? Uh, Robert, you should not be participating.
Correct.
Is, you have to be seated?
Yes.
Yes. All right, then we'll take Rob Westland's name off of there.
Okay.
Still unanimous. Anything else before we move on to the next agenda item?
No, sir.
All right. Number five, we have a eight dash twenty-four referral from the Town Council to lease a portion of the Town of Monroe lands at Van Hill Road. That's the school campus for construction and operation of a telecommunications tower and ground facility. So the town is seeking our input on their, um, and you think it's AT&amp;T's proposal to build a cell tower on that property. Did you all get the map that, um, uh, was sent out recently? The aerial view as to where the cell tower will be?
Yes. Yes.
And the height, et cetera. So what we generally do with these is to, um, send a message to the Town Council that we are in, act, that we are in favor or we are not in favor of them proceeding. And if we are in favor or not in favor, what we recommend for them to ask for as well.
Commissioner Maiini's in favor.
Okay, um, is there any discussion amongst the, the rest of the commissioners on this cell tower?
None.
No, no discussion? All right. We can recommend that they do shielding or, shall we say, screening of the area. Landscape screening, that kind of thing, fencing other than just a chain link fence. Anybody in favor of that?
Well, I'm in favor in screening it. They also can screen the tower too, Mike.
They can't screen the tower. It's a hundred and what?
Hundred and seventy-six feet.
Seventy-six.
Hundred and seventy-six feet.
Yeah, they, they put stuff around that tower to make it look like a tree.
They can't do that.
I've seen it before.
They don't really look much like trees.
Actually, actually, the technology today is quite advanced and it do quite a few things. The difficulty in this spot perhaps will be its height because at a hundred and seventy-six feet tall, the surrounding woods, if we're lucky, have eighty, eighty-five feet tall trees.
Right.
But that doesn't mean you sit and evaluate it and look at alternatives and have that evaluation to show whether it's good or bad.
That's gonna come back in front of us anyway, right?
No, it's not gonna come in front of you.
Siding council.
Okay.
What, what your recommendation can do is a couple of things. You, you have the ability to interject your opinions as the planning and zoning authority or expert, if you will, for the town in land use and visual impact and aesthetic env- environmental impact. If you, if you vote in favor, that's fine. If you vote unfavorable or favorable with conditions, the Town Board to negate or, or not pay attention to your recommendations, they would need a super majority vote.
What's the feeling of the other commissioners? Favorable, unfavorable?
I'm favorable.
I pick my kids up there and I'm very favorable. There's, there's no service down there. Do we know why it's a hundred and seventy-six feet? Is it supposed to reach a certain distance? For instance, will it reach high school? Will it be better at the high school, being that high?
That'll all be determined before the siding council.
I mean, generally, they're probably maximizing it and they're gonna make room for three, four others. Hundred seventy-six is a very tall tower. Most towers are really more in the hundred twenty, hundred fifty range. It all depends on location, signal strength. Towers are also not addressing five G. Five G is lower things. So it really comes down to the details, which you don't have.
Well, it sounds like the commission is, um, leaning towards a favorable report. Do we want to, um, suggest that they, um, ask for maybe evergreen screening versus just a fence? Since this is really in, right in a trail system, a nature trail behind Chalk Hill.
Sure.
All right.
The tower off Moose Hill near, um, where the old airport was.
Yes.
They have those big trees, at least trying to cover some of the bottom. It's a big, huge giant right in the middle of the whole field, so it's kind of hard not to see it. But I think anything better than nothing.
Yeah, it might cover the shed or the generator or whatever else they're putting up. So Will, do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, you do.
All right, then, um, do we have a motion to, um, report to the Town Council favorably with recommendations?
I make a motion to of, to, uh, Town Council to, that we, uh, Planning and Zoning is in favor of the cellphone tower with, with screening conditions.
Thank you.
And Ryan?
Who was the second?
Ryan.
Yeah, can you please identify yourself when you make a motion or a second? So we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Yes, Ryan seconded.
I'll call the roll then. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Maiini?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Westland? Rob, are you seated?
No.
No.
Schneider, yeah.
All right, so Schneider, you're, did you vote? Did you say yes? Sorry.
I did say yes. Schneider, yes.
All right, then the eyes have it.
Michael, did you vote?
Oh, O'Reilly, yes.
Thank you.
So we do have a site plan review. Number six on the agenda, S E P two thousand and fifteen dash A two, file number one five six six eight, five hundred Pepper Street, Caruba, I one, correction, I two district. They're asking for permit amendment modification, miscellaneous modifications to an approved site plan. Everyone know? Did everyone receive the packet? I'm sorry, who's speaking? Who's speaking? No one's speaking. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, Will, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss on?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was muted. It's Kevin Solley here. He's, he should present on behalf of the applicant.
I can see him. I'm trying to figure out where his audio is.
This is Kevin. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, um, yes, I can. Great, thank you. Um, uh, for the record, my name's Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed project engineer at Data Connecticut with Solley Engineering, associated here at five one Main Street, Pro. We can run through our, uh, proposed application for a modification amendment to five hundred Pepper Street. Uh, with me here is, is, um, Mary Blackburn from my office, who can run through some of those technical details. And Georgia, if you could actually make the presenter, I can pull up a quick presentation to just kind of run the commission through all these very minor tweaks. We're, um, we're really excited. This project to five hundred Pepper Street has been before the commission several times over several years. It's gone through some construction. It's gone through a substantial amount of construction. And we're pretty much close to the end of having, uh, facility ready to be opened and, and go pull our C O, so. So we can finally, basically, if it is.
So, internet.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Will, and all the, all the.
Kevin, we're just trying to figure out who else is talking over you.
Yeah, I would, I would probably suggest just muting everybody.
Are you on a separate line though, right?
We're, well, I'm on, no, I, I plugged in my code, so as long as you have Kevin Solley unmuted, that's all that matters. I don't have another caller number.
Perfect. You should be good to go now, and I just gave you the sharing permission, so you should be able to accept that now.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually hand it over to Mary from my office to kind of run through some of the, some of the technical tweaks that we've done as part of the project, but you should all be able to see, let me just minimize everything. You should all be able to see that presentation up on your screen. Go ahead. Take it to you.
All right, good. We can.
Hi, I'm Mary Blackburn. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut and with Solley Engineering. So I'll run you through the changes that we're proposing. They're very minor on the site plan. Some of the changes we've made were when the timber guide rail wasn't installed, there were, can you see my mouse? On the screen as well?
Yep.
So there are minor changes into how far the timber guide rail extended in some of the areas. There was an island with a double swing gate here on the east side of the building and another double swing gate on the west side that are proposed to be eliminated. And there was a bench in front of the building that was going to be on a pad, like a separate pad in the planting area that we're proposing. That had to be eliminated and the bench be on the pad. Then there were some items that the applicant would like to potentially install, but he doesn't want the zoning compliance or the certificate of occupancy to be dependent on these items being installed. And that would be a detail in the front sidewalk that is just the logo, the A, from his sign. That would be like poured and placed concrete and just colored to match his logo. A pedestrian bridge, because there's a nice little area in back here that's a little clearing and he wants to be able to put picnic tables for his employees to go out to eat lunch. And then he'd like to put two chain gates on each engine. And those would just be similar to the guard rail and just be a timber, timber post with a chain that stretches between them. And then if we move on to the utility plan. You can see the minor changes. They just moved the gas service. And then there were electric handholds for the gates that are being eliminated. Those would be the, and then there was a proposed generator pad that he's no longer going to need, so that's being removed. And on the landscape plan, he's actually added quite a bit of landscaping above and beyond what was originally approved. You can see in this area in the back, he's added a large landscape bed. This is previously just grass. He's added plantings there. And then all of this area around the back of the building was grass. And he's added additional plantings in that area. He isn't changing anything that was approved within the basin at the back or the basin at the front. It's mainly limited, as you can see, to just around the building. And then for the lighting, we took, actually, we went out and I had took some light level readings and there were some darker areas, so we're proposing to add a pole fixture at the back here near the loading, two pole fixtures at the front and a pole fixture on the side. And then for additional wall packs, we'd add one here, one here, one at the back. And we rearranged these two to make room for three evenly spaced fixtures. And then there'll be two recess fixtures in the socket at the front entry. This is just a typical detail to give an idea of what he was thinking he may want to install for the pedestrian footbridge at the back. But if he were to move forward with that, he would provide specific details and documents on a at that time. And I'll quickly run through the floor plan changes. For the first floor, he just wants to add a four by four utility closet at the back here. And there was a conference room at the front, you can see here that we're proposing be eliminated. On the second floor. You can see the shape of these two utility chases have changed. And there'll be a roof access ladder that's going to be proposed on this wall, and there's an additional door here. And then for the elevations, really what's changed is just the lighting that I went over on the lighting plan. He would also like to add a sign that says five hundred above the front entrance. Previously not here. He'd like to not install the column. And then on the back of the building, again, the lighting has changed. And then there's one condenser unit that's mounted on the back wall that wasn't included in the previous elevation. So this is, you can see, he's installed all of his landscaping and this is as the building exists today.
So as you can see, the, the changes have been very, very minor in nature and, you know, because of the, the number, I think, and some of the aesthetic changes, staff thought we should come back before the commission and get approval from you, that these are all acceptable modifications. As Mary pointed out, we did want to highlight that some of these are more optional in that the owner is looking for the commission's approval to install these in the future if he, if he so chooses, but not have to come back before the commission for another permit modification. So this, we'd like, we'd like basically the commission to approve the application of this. And then if any of these things happen in the future, we'd simply go through a, getting a zoning permit with staff at that time, but we would just want to make sure that the commission was okay with this. All of these changes, including these optional considerations, have been approved administratively by the Wetlands agent, and so all those approvals are in hand. He's expecting to, you know, finish the final course of pavement, striping. He's finishing up the interior work now and he's hoping to actually have all work finished in, in, you know, sometime in July. Or maybe even early August to have this facility kind of finally occupied and get this bill, get this building back up and active. And we're really excited that it's finally coming to an end. So with that, we'd happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Solley. Will, do we ask for comments from the public on this?
No.
Oh, okay. Do you want to add your comments at this point before we go to the commissioners?
If you want me to.
Yes.
Okay, so I did a review memo dated May fifth, two thousand twenty. As Kevin said, they have their wetland permit at the, at this time. There are a series of optional items which I've illuminated in my memo, and I also indicated that from a staff procedural pursuit part, I don't see a problem with the commission doing that if it so feels that appropriate. But it should be clear that they do run with a certain level of expiration, so that the time of expiration was still toll. But you could fashion in a way that they are optional up to the applicant and that they aren't needed for a final certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy and that each one could be implemented later at its own pace with the drawn permitting. But it would have an overall upset time, which is the normal course of any permit. The few areas where I had also commented about a couple of things they've taken care of, so I'm just going to highlight the things that are sort of remaining. With regards to the chain link, or not chain link, excuse me, chain gates, which they want to put way up front at, near the street. If I understand it, it's really just a post and a chain. So I don't know if the commission finds that to go with the building and if maybe something more decorative or better looking, or at least a better post, something that's more in line with the building rather than, I don't know if it was intended to be just a wood, a pressure treated post or something like that, it's like the guard rails and a chain. So that's something you might want to think about. The other is the bridge, if the footbridge does get implemented, as noted on the detail of the bridge itself, it doesn't include the safety railing system, so much more detail of the bridge would need to be provided to the building department as part of the permitting process. That should definitely be noted in any approval you have. The other comment I said is, is again up to you, the removal of those columns in the front of the building. We spent a lot of time with the architecture back in the approval, a lot of it with the front entry. Again, that's up to you. Perspective, it, it is a departure, but that's up to you to decide what's okay.
All right, thank you, Will. I'm going to go through the commissioners for any comment. Ambrosi?
Yeah, Will, most of this you can handle in-house, right?
What do you mean by handle?
Well, you can handle, like, if we tell them it's okay, that you can give them approvals on this other stuff. Besides the stuff in the building that they don't want to put the columns on.
You mean the optional, the optional items?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you would, you would approve the modifications and we can fashion that approval, that modification approval, identifying those as optional items, not holding up the CO and, you know, what course of path they take with, you know, just getting the administrative permits to implement them in the timely, in the, you know, the life of the permit, which, you know, can go another five years on top of what we're running on right now.
Okay, and the picture that Kevin put up, is that the most recent picture of that building?
I believe, I, I don't, I don't know when it's, you have to ask Kevin when it was.
Yes.
Yes, this is, this is the picture from probably, yeah, the end of April, beginning of May.
Okay, I don't have a problem with the columns since.
Okay, any other comments, Leon?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Maene?
Yeah, Kev, or Mary, whoever. Talk to me about the, talk to me about the chain link fence that you guys want to do in the front. I don't know how keen I am about the way it's going to look with just a, just a pole per se.
It wouldn't be a chain link fence. We have, they have large ten by ten pine timbers that they use for the guard rail, so they would use the same post to put at the front of the driveways. And then there would just be a steel chain that while they were closed, just stand between the trees, large pine.
They've had, they've had issues with, apparently there's been some vehicles that have decided to cut through the Pepper Street entrance and then go on to the Cambridge Drive entrance, and it's caused some damage to their curbs. So they were just looking for a way to, and you may have actually driven by and seen a pickup parked from those driveways to try to, try to discourage people from doing that. This is just something, something that they wanted to have the ability to put in, to discourage people from illegally driving through their property and damaging their curbs. They didn't want to put in anything robust from a cost standpoint. They want to focus on, you know, the improvements inside their building and their landscaping is, is phenomenal. I mean, every time you drive by there, it's like a freaking nursery. It's fantastic. But, but this is something that, you know, and it would only be, it wouldn't really be noticeable and it would really only be something that would happen, you know, they, they may run this chain across at the end of the day or at, you know, or, or at night, so you'd really hardly even notice that it's there. And the, the timber or the pine posts that they're looking to put in are consistent with the timber guide rail that you see out there now, which I, which I think is a fine aesthetic. You know, we wanted to.
Actually, on one side of the driveway, the guard rail lines up where they could just extend the height of one of the posts to tie it in, so it would all look.
So it's not going to be anything retractable or any of that kind of stuff?
No.
They will manually open it and close it as, as need be?
Correct.
And I, I, I'm fine with that. Also, the, I'm assuming all the lighting that you're adding is dark sky compliant and so on and so forth?
Yeah, it's the same lighting that's currently proposed traditionally.
And by the way, you're actually a hundred percent correct. It's absolutely gorgeous building, by the way, with the, with the landscaping. It is, it is head and shoulders above the rest of the buildings on that, on that street. Also, I'm in agreements with Will. They definitely need more detail on that bridge if that, if you want to come before us with, I think it's very incomplete as we currently look at it. I mean, I mean, I'm sure, sure you guys will do that and I'm sure it'll be great, but definitely at this moment to, to give you my opinion, I mean, we can't really, we can't really give you a yea or nay without something a little bit more complete than, than what you have there.
Well, what we were asking the commission for was the approval of that in context and then allow us to go through those specific details with staff once we elect to actually install that footbridge. All it would really do is save its employees maybe a minute walk to not have to walk around the basement, so. I don't know if he'll actually even take up, you know, install it, but it was something he asked us to pursue. But yes, the, the plan, the detail that we did submit was schematic in nature. We found a footbridge company that could give us something. But yeah, any, any application that we, that we would go through staff with would have that additional detail. And you'd be, and, you know, you guys, the comfort, you could take comfort that staff would make sure that what we wanted to do is up to their snuff, which we know is, is pretty good.
Yes, I actually agree with you there. I have no more questions.
Brian Condon?
No question. None.
Ron Schneider?
No questions for me either.
All right. I have no questions either. Mr. Solley, any comment?
Michael?
Yes, yes.
Robert can provide input on this. He just won't be able to participate in a, a motion.
Rob, any input?
Yeah, well, my question's for Mr. Solley. Removal of the columns here, that won't leave the overhang structurally deficient?
No, those were decorative columns. The, the building itself structurally is down, didn't need it. And I think actually what, what happened was once they actually built the building without the columns, because those were additives come later in the construction process, when they looked at it, they actually thought it looked so good, they thought the columns is going to detract from the grand, the grandness of the entrance itself. So there's no structural issue with removing the columns.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Solley, any closing comments?
Just that we appreciate the commission's consideration. We, the many members have been a part of this over many years. We're excited to finally get this thing finished and open.
Thank you. All right. Sounds like we're leaning towards an approval. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion for SEP two thousand fifteen dash A two, file number one five six six A, five hundred Pepper Street, Caraba, I two district for modifications as drafted.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, Ambrosi. All right, then I'll go. Pull the roll, Ambrosi. Ambrosi, yes. Maene?
Yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Condon, yes.
Schneider?
Schneider, yes.
And O'Reilly, yes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. All right, next item on the agenda is a time extension. This is SEP 2019 dash oh seven, file number 1615A for Maple Drive. It's an I1 and a B1 district. O'Keefe Controls Exploration to complete remedial work as set as set by the commission was May 1st, 2020. They're seeking a four month time extension to September 1st. I have a letter from Spath B. Auckland requesting the time extension. Do it. Will, do you have anything else on that?
I, I do, but I think David Borkland is here. David, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you maybe give two cents and then I'll give my last two cents?
Yeah, this was held up due to the COVID. The owner of the property is an older woman. And in order to post the bond and to proceed, she had to have her signature notarized. And she was quarantined and did not want to have any interaction with the notary. And so in speaking with, with Rick, we decided that the governor's extension of land use approvals covered things like this. And what we did was we posted the bond without the notary, but by the time we got that done, we were almost out of time in order to do the construction. So that's the reason we're requesting the extension. In the meantime, we've held the pre-construction meeting and I believe construction is ongoing as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bialkland. Will?
Yeah, I guess I don't really add, add much to that.
All right. Do we have a motion to grant the time extension?
I make a, Commissioner Maeni, I make a motion for a time extension, SEP 2019 dash oh seven, file number 1615A for Maple Drive to grant the four month time extension.
Second, Ambrosi. Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Maeni, no.
Ambrosi, no.
No constru-, no discussion?
No discussion.
All right, then we'll call the roll. Ambrosi?
Ambrosi, yes.
Maeni?
Yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Schneider?
Schneider, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is a bond release. That's SUB 2016 dash oh two, file number 1259C, 36 Timothy Hill Road and an I2 district. We have an email requesting a full bond release. The amount on the agenda is wrong. It's 47,500, not 475,000. I have a bond release report. I'm mad everyone has that in front of them. The town engineer has gone through the this property has recently changed hands. I went down to the property myself. I don't think there's anyone there from to speak on behalf of this, correct, Will?
I'm not sure. Is.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, it's Dave Bialkland. I'll speak on behalf of the developer or the current property owner.
Okay, go ahead.
I think Peter's here too.
Yeah, I believe Peter is on also. Yeah.
I'm here.
Yes.
Yes, he's here.
All right, go ahead.
Members of the commission, this is Dave Bialkland. The situation here is this bond was posted as permitted under the state statute. Nine months, you can post a bond that lets the developer work on the property for nine months and to get some construction done. And then when you get to the end of nine months, you compute the amount of work that remains to be done and a performance bond is posted. This is, we refer to these as a site, site, site stability bond. The work was started by the previous developer who got the subdivision approved. And in that nine month period, he went on to the property and he cleared the area that was required for road construction and grubbed the area. And then abandoned the project, I think, approximately three years ago. In the meantime, ownership of the property changed hands and the new owner filed replacement bonds with both the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And tho- those are the bonds that, that's the bond that we're discussing this evening. The subdivision, because it was not recorded at the nine month timeframe, the subdivision is null and void. In order for that subdivision to go forward and the road construction to go forward and completely new application would have to be filed for that subdivision. So what I think is important and what should be focused on here is that fact is that the subdivision is null and void, nonexistent, and that the site has been stabilized. There are a couple of outstanding issues. There's some piles of fill. At the end of Independence Drive, those had nothing to do with the construction of the subdivision. And they were placed there by, by other persons, persons who owned 64 Cambridge. There's another issue that has come up. And that's that there's a, an oak, temporary oak timber bridge that was built on 64 Cambridge. If you look at the subdivision plans and you look at the bond, 64 Cambridge was not part of the subdivision. It wasn't a lot in the subdivision. The only role that 64 Cambridge played in this was they took a small piece from 64, 4 Cambridge to make the road right away wide enough. That was the only role that 64 had in the subdivision. The bridge that's been discussed is on 64 Cambridge and it was hundreds of feet away from where the road construction was to take place. The, there was another bridge on the property that has been removed by the owner. That did straddle the subdivision line. Portion of it was on 64 Cambridge. The other portion was on a lot that was part of the subdivision. That bridge has been removed. Other than that, the remainder of the site has been stabilized. It's been seeded and we have a statement from a forester that the area is regenerating itself quite nicely. So based upon that, we'd like to have the bond released.
Thank you, Mr. Bialkland. Mr. Machopolis, do you want to comment?
Well, I'm here for any questions you'd like, but.
Okay, well, let's go through the commissioners. See if, we'll go through the commissioners, see if they have any questions.
Great.
Ambrosi, Leon? Do you have any questions about the bond release?
No questions.
Bruno Maeni, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Ryan Condon?
No question.
Ron Schneider?
No questions.
Rob Westland?
No questions at this time.
All right, then the chair would like a motion to approve the bond release.
Commissioner Maeni makes a motion. SUB 2016 dash oh two, file number 1259C, 36 Timothy Road for a release of the bond. I think you said it was 47,500, not 475,000.
That's correct. I have a motion.
Bond release for 47,500.
All right, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Ambrosi, second.
All right, we'll call the roll. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Maeni?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. So we'll, we'll release that bond, that complete release of that bond. Next item on the agenda is the pending minutes for June the 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Commissioner Maeni, a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 4th, 2020, as drafted.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Ambrosi, second.
All right, so that night. Not sure who was here.
You all were there.
I think Bob was seated, right?
No, but you don't need to do that. You go with the who's seated tonight.
Oh, okay. Call of all, then Ambrosi. Leon, you approve? Are you there? Leon?
Can you tickle Leon?
Wake up, Leon. And Maeni? Maeni?
Yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Schneider?
Schneider, yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. And Leon abstains.
Michael, if we're going to move forward, we probably need to get him established again.
Okay. Leon, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Let me see. George, is he muted?
Yeah, I just unmuted him and it's staying. So it must be something on his end. It won't let me change it.
Give me two seconds.
It's still, there he goes.
There he goes.
Yeah, but I can't get a picture of him, so.
All right, we have you now, Leon.
You can enter him back into that vote if you want to.
Okay, Leon, you want to approve the minutes?
Ambrosi, yes.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Moving on to other business. We have regulation review amendment work session. So we have been working on several projects in the regulation subcommittee. And we'd like to go through three of them tonight. Mainly to get the full commission's input as to what direction we'd like, you would like us to go on these three items. So we'll start with the easiest one. The first one is the potential change from the B1 to the B2 district along Main Street. From Judd Road North, at this point, it's all B1 and we'd like to change that to a B2. I think, Mr. Bialkland, can you run us through that briefly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I met with the commission last fall to discuss a property, 193 Main Street, which is in the strip between Purdy Hill Road and that the B1 zone runs from Purdy Hill and Judd North almost up to the Sipin property. The Sipin property is zoned B2. At that point in time, I, when I addressed the commission informally, I had indicated that my client was interested in converting the zone on his property to a B2 zone. At that point in time, the commission said, why don't we change the zone all the way from Purdy Hill and Judd, which south of that is B2 zoning. And all the way up to the other B2 zone, which is at the Sipin property. I indicated that I, we, we were favorable. My client was favorable to that. And so it took a while to get here. Part of it was my client had to close on the property. That took most of the fall. And then we ran into the COVID situation. So here we are. We're ready to go forward. We have submitted a preliminary zone change map to Rick and Will with the idea that we will sit down based upon tonight's outcome. We're going to sit down. We're going to fine tune the proposed change of zone map. And then the commission and staff is going to initiate the zone change. One of the other things that I had indicated that I would do is that I would approach all the property owners in the proposed zone change area. And at least get a verbal consensus that they were in favor of this. The, and I've started that process. I expect it's going to take another week or two. The, I've got next Thursday and Friday set out to I know most of the property owners, the ones that I don't own, I'll be trying to get in touch with them directly on Thursday or Friday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to poll the commissioners if they had, they have any comment and if they would like for us to go ahead with this. Ambrosi?
Yes. Go ahead with it.
Maeni? Sorry.
Yeah, but when, when we discussed this in the commission last time, we did, we found that there was already B2 uses in that area that were grandfathered in. So that's what came into consensus, the consensus to change the whole zone.
That's correct. Maeni?
Yes.
Any comments?
Let's go with no.
Okay. Condon?
And I would say go forward with it.
Westland?
I see no reason why not to go forward with it.
Schneider?
Go forward.
And O'Reilly, yes, we'll go forward with that. Thank you. Next item, potential rezoning of the former Stevenson Lumber property. We've been talking about Stevenson Lumber property for quite some time. We have some, a request to go in a certain direction, which I'd like to get the commission members input on. On a couple of items. One is commercial parking. That's the parking of cars, boats on trailers, RVs and fully operational commercial equipment. And an area that would be screened and gated. And that the vehicles would be registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles. Those that can be registered. That would also include outside storage, outdoor storage of raw materials, which would not be tied to the 20% rule that we have always gone by. In other words, you're allowed to have the 20% of the square footage of your building. So this would be different from that. So we'd like to get some input from the commissioners how they feel about Stevenson Lumber in general, that property and Stevenson Lumber in general, that property and, um, those couple of, um, new uses, it would be new uses for an I two zone. So let's start with, um. Leon Ambrosi.
Yeah, well, we've had this at the subcommittee for a while and, um. We know that's a unique piece of property and I'm in favor of, of the changes, of some of the changes here. But I thought John wanted to finish up. Is John there? Does John wanna speak?
Yes, we can ask John questions.
Yeah, does he wanna speak now before we start to deliberate on this?
Well, we're not really, we're not really deliberating. I'm just trying, we're just trying to get, um, the commissions, take temperature of the commission on where they would like to go.
Right, but I, I thought what we were gonna do here tonight was, I thought that was, are we gonna take this on or is John going to take it forward?
Well, that's part of what we, what I wanna know from you guys, what you think we should do.
Well, I, I was under the understanding that John, John wanted to finish it up. And he didn't have a problem finishing it up, right? Sir Kimball?
Uh, John, are you there? Can you unmute?
Yeah, it's John Kimball. Yeah, no, Leon, you're correct. I, I do not have, it's John Kimball, uh, for the record. I don't have a problem finishing up the, um, the process. What happened was when COVID hit, uh, people were uncertain about the timelines and deadlines. So we thought it might be more appropriate for the commission to take it on because the commission doesn't have to worry about the, you know, thirty-five day and sixty-five day rules. Might make it easier, uh, for the commission to, to make, make the application. But we're certainly prepared, you know, we, we, we have kind of a final draft. We've been through the regulation subcommittee, you know, a number of times. I think we've fine tuned the language to the point where at least the subcommittee was comfortable with it. And I think the question tonight i- is really, do we want to, uh, does the commission feel comfortable to, to have us submit this application, uh, through us, or does the commission wanna submit it on its own behalf? Um, to get, you know, get it, get this, uh, process completed. Um. We're happy to work with the commission in e- either way. Um. So it's, it's really trying to leave it up to you as to how to, how to, you know, we, we certainly have the resources to get the application finished and bring it, so. What's your pleasure?
Okay, so, um, Leon, you're okay with the two new uses? That's basically what we wanted to, um, ascertain.
Well, I wanna new uses that are on there. Yeah, we discussed this all in the commit, uh, in the subcommittee. Now we need to, we need to ask the rest of the commission members if they wanna take it, like John's saying, if they wanna take this upon ourself, or you want John to finish it up? And then we bring it into the commission, then we look at it, we review it, and then we vote on it.
Uh, Commissioner Maeney thinks that, that John Kimball should finish it and bring it before us.
Um, how are you on the two new uses?
Um. 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 To be, to be honest with you, if he brings it forward, we have more time to discuss and, and go over it. Um, we could always, we could always tweak it if we're not happy with the two new uses, if everyone's not a hundred percent clear on them. So I think, I think Mr. Kimball should put them in the, in his, in his writing for the regulation. And then we can adjust it from there if we're not comfortable. Um, that's just only where I stand.
Okay, uh, thank you. So, um. Ryan, you're not on the subcommittee.
Correct.
So, um, you know, you haven't had a chance, like, um, Leon and Bruno have to talk with us and then myself to talk with staff and Mr. Kimball extensively about the, uh, new uses and so I'd like to get your input a little bit if, on that.
Yeah, um, I know, I remember when this kind of idea came in front of us a while back. It's a lot bigger. It does seem like you guys really kinda narrowed it down, so it wasn't as, um, kinda out there. Uh, so I'd be, I'd be okay going forward with it. Um, and again, whether it's Mr. Kimball bring it forward or us, uh, I'd say whatever, um. I don't really see a big difference unless, you know, Mr. Kimball doesn't wanna bring it forward and would prefer us to, it's, you know, up to you guys on that end. Yeah, I'm okay moving forward with the two new uses.
Okay. Rob, Westland?
My only, uh, my only thought is, um, these types of conditions are rarely, in my opinion, taken seriously with respect to, um, what you were saying earlier about this equipment being registered and fully operational, um. In, in, in past, uh, in past experiences of mine, I, 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 you know, I could almost envision an area like this. Um, we don't wanna fall into like a junkyard type area. I have a bunch of equipment and vehicles that sit there and rot away and, and, you know, don't get used and don't get looked at for years on end. So I was just, uh, concerned that, that those conditions, you know, be taken seriously.
Okay. Um. Ron Schneider?
Well, I don't know if I was concerned before, but I am now. I agree. Would John, as far as what Rob is worried about, will John moving forward make sure that won't happen?
Well, I think what John was proposing was that the vehicles had to be registered with the state of Connecticut. So that means that the vehicles would have to be, uh, registered with the state of Connecticut. If they're not registered with the state of Connecticut, then they would have to be removed off the property. I think that was part of that regulation, right, John?
Yeah, yes, Leon. Um, uh, it's John Kimball for the record. Um, the, the, uh, in the regulation in two places, it says that they have, the vehicles have to be registered other than some construction equipment. But you understand that people are paying, it's like the equipment that's stored over at Cube Smart right now. People are paying fee every month for a parking space and it's a designated parking space. It's screened from the road, so you can't see it. It's fenced gated, um, there's key fob access to the area. And then e- every person's got a numbered parking space, but this is more stuff that will be presented during the public hearing, when you'll have a chance to vet this out and decide whether you wanna add additional controls or other things. Right now, we're just trying to decide whether, and, and, you know, to Bruno's point, I'm fully willing to make the application and, and prepared to do it immediately. So we will, um, we'd like to discuss this, you know, entire application and go through each use and make sure that there's the appropriate controls and safeguards so that the commission, because we don't want a junkyard either. I mean, I live right around the corner from this property. And right now, it does look like a junkyard, you know, but, uh, you know, so we're, we're excited to kinda get this thing moving forward and we'd, we'd like to pick up the ball and run with it. The commission, uh, doesn't, doesn't wanna do it under their own, um, you know, take control of it. More about, you know, um, who, who put the last words in the last draft, I think, you know, but Will and I ha- ha- we've been working for, you know, months, you know, almost two years now, fine tuning this, so I think we're getting close, you know?
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay, are we, um, the commissioners, um, okay with the outdoor storage of raw materials?
Well, like, like John just said, I think that we're, we're okay with it, but we could, you know, when it comes in front of us, when he comes in with the, when it comes in front of us during, during the hearing, those are the kind of things that we can hash out.
I mean, not to toot my own horn, but that's exactly what I said a while ago.
All right. Then it sounds like the commission wants to direct the staff to work with Mr. Kimball to tweak the wording and, uh, and the subcommittee and to move forward. Is that correct?
Uh, Commissioner Maeney agrees with that. Commissioner O- But that's just me.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner, just so that I'm clear, or, uh, Chairman? Do you want us to come back to the subcommittee or just work with staff to prepare a final draft and, and submit it to the commission?
Well, yes, I want you to work with the subcommittee to, to, um, tweak the language and then present the final draft.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner, I mean, uh, Chairman O'Reilly, I, I, I don't know about that. Can't he just work with staff and then bring it to the commission? Wouldn't that be faster?
I'm not really, I mean, there's a few little, um, you know, formatting and things like that that staff can do. But we're, we're at a level where you have to make some policy decisions and directions, so. I mean, I'm happy to do the little tweak to, to clean up some, just wording for consistency issues. But I don't know what else staff is gonna be able to do without your input.
Yeah, I think it, excuse me, I think it's, I think, you know, Will's correct, he, he can work with us, we can work on formatting. But I think we're ready. I mean, we've been to the subcommittee six times now. We've been vetting this thing for two years. I think we're ready to bring it in front of the commission unless somebody's got a real objection and then we'll, we'll go through use by use in, in, in the, in the full chambers with the commission.
Well, John, didn't you say that you had to, um, change some stuff on this draft?
I, I had, I, I changed from, from our Monday night subcommittee meeting. I already made those changes.
And are those changes in this draft that I have?
Yeah, those were, those were done, uh, by, by, by eight o'clock Tuesday morning. So you have a final draft.
Last revised June sixteenth.
Yeah.
You mark up your changes in here or no? What are the changes that you came up with?
They, they are, it was redlined when I sent it over to Will.
And that's what I forwarded to you all.
Yeah, mine aren't redlined, so.
I can send a, I can send a PDF out to Will so that he can make sure that you can find the changes.
That'd be fine.
And then I, I, I have the redlined version, which is what I did circulate, but we'll make sure everyone that Leon gets one.
Okay. No, 'cause I didn't see those in here. That's why I was wondering.
So to be clear, this Commissioner Maeney again, to be clear, John, you're gonna work with staff on the little minor stuff and then you're gonna come before the subcommittee again to go over it one more time?
I was actually planning on if it's okay, because we've been working on this for two years and I think we're at a point where the whole commission just needs to, to hear it. Um. I'll work with Will on the final change, you know, changes to get it, the, the text the way he wants to see it. And then we'd submit it as an application and bring it in front of the whole commission unless, unless if, look, I don't wanna force the issue, so if you wanna see it back at subcommittee, you be, just be very clear and tell me that's what you wanna have happen, but I think we've talked about it.
I just, I just suggested about a minute ago that you bring this to the full commission and then I was told that it has to come back to subcommittee one more time. So I, I'm really confused right now and I wish somebody would just make it straight to me.
Yeah, I'd like it to bring it to, directly to the full commission is what I'd like to do.
And I, I agree with that and that's why I said it before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But again, that's just, that's just my feeling. I don't wanna speak for everyone else. That's just my feeling. I mean, if you guys don't think it's, it's right, then, then speak up or forever hold your peace.
All right, Will, do you think you can work, um, with the, with, uh, John on this? And do you have enough input right now to have a document that you can bring before the full commission, or would you like more input from the sub?
Okay. If I understand correctly, the commission is not gonna propose this. John is gonna propose this in a, a formal petition. I can work with John for just tweaking, uh, technical aspects. I'm not gonna get involved in any substantive or non-technical issues that we don't have any input at this time from any of you. Um, so what I'm hearing from Mike Bruno is, which is fine, that bring it to the commission and those, those issues can be hashed out during the public hearing process.
Well, it sounds to me like the commission is okay with the new uses, which is the major issue here. So I, is that correct?
Well, did you ask Ryan and, and Ron and Rob what they think?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, we went through the whole, um, uh, roster. We could do it again if you'd like.
Well, you, you asked, you asked us originally about the usages, but not about the, whether or not it needs to go to subcommittee. My thought process would be if, uh, it needs to go back to subcommittee, then the subcommittee should be the ones proposing it. If not, and we're good after, uh, Mr. Kimball working with you guys, then let's have Mr. Kimball move it forward as a result of the full commission.
Huh? What?
What? I think, I think you guys are ready, move it, move it towards, uh, have Mr. Kimball propose it to the full commission. If for some reason, you guys, the majority here thinks that it needs to work with the subcommittee again, then it should be out of Mr. Kimball's hands and the subcommittee should just put it forward. Would be my thought process.
That's why I was saying that we should decide what the rest of the commission wants to do. Um, I'm fine with it either way it goes. I think Bruno's fine with what either way it goes. I wanna see what Rob has to say, Ron, and you, and Mike.
All right, Rob.
I mean, at this point, I don't think, I think Mr. Kimball got the gist of, you know, kinda what we're looking for. I don't think it needs to go through subcommittee first. I think that's just an unnecessary step, so.
Okay. And then Ron?
I agree with Rob and Ryan. And Bruno, and Bruno. And pretty much everybody, so let's just do it.
All right, I guess you can bring it forward.
Yes.
All right, it sounds like that's what the commission wants to do. So we'll direct staff to work with, um, uh, Mr. Kimball to tweak the language. And then, uh, Mr. Kimball will propose the change to the full commission, once he's ready. Did I get it right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, you got it right.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda um, is similar in that I would like to get the commissioners' input on, um, mixed-use zoning. Now, this is, um, a little more complicated. There are several things that I would like you to, um, chime in on. I mean, this is mostly about apartments in Monroe. There really, I don't think there are any legal apartments in Monroe. But this, um, regulation would allow apartments in Monroe.
Legal being the keyword.
Legal apartments, freestanding apartment buildings, apartments above, um, commercial establishments, um, new construction of apartment buildings, new construction of apartments above new commercial establishments and retrofitting old commercial establishments. Um, the old strip malls that we have that aren't doing that well, that have maybe offices above or nothing above, um, allowing them to, um, put apartments above those establishments. So I'd like to get input on your ideas as to where you wanna go with apartments.
It, Mike, it's not apartments, it's mixed use.
Well, it's mixed use, but it really is, comes down to apartments.
Right, but you have a combination of the both. But yes, it does come down to the apartment aspect, but it's still, there's still a commercial aspect to it.
We'd like to maintain the commercial aspect of it, yes.
Correct.
We also need to talk about where in Monroe we wanna allow this. Do we want this to be on Route twenty-five? Do you want it to include Route one eleven, Route thirty-four? So I-
Mike, not to, Mike, not to interrupt, and I apologize for doing it again, but maybe you could explain to the rest of the commission about the, about what, um, they were talking about with the overlay and how they felt that that was the, with the P O C D, that that was the, the way to go.
Well, basically, um, with the new- Well, basically, with the new POCD coming out, we plan on changing the business districts around, maybe into one district. However, that's not going to be for some time now. We do have people interested in mixed-use now. So we wanted to do something that we could get through in a relatively quick manner. So that these people that are interested in building can go ahead and do that and not have to wait until the new POCD comes out. So we've been meeting in the Subcommittee and talking about this. And, you know, the three of us meeting are pretty much on the same page. But I want to get input from the rest of the Commission and which way you want us to go with this. Well, either Rick or Will should go through this with the other Commissioners, because they haven't been at the meeting. And you can say what the guy said from the POCD. I guess, Rick, you talked, he was on with our meeting.
Yeah, if I can share a couple of things. Will and I have really discussed the whole gamut of the approach. The last draft proposal that the Commission has is a overlay approach. And you heard from, we heard from Francisco, the consultant. And he endorsed that approach because many towns have done it. We have it in Trumbull with a successful project right down on Route 25 that Will and I have visited, and areas in Newtown as well. But in discussing it in more detail today with Will, there's an easier approach to do this. And we're suggesting to the Commission that we don't do any radical base changes, but to allow the mixed-use by special exception, you know, the multifamily. So that's the direction that we're leaning on right now. And we're hoping that the Commission supports that, so Will and I can move ahead. This is a collaborative effort, working with a variety of individuals, professionals. And I think we can come up with the appropriate language. We do need to take this to the Subcommittee again. Because it is, it's evolving as we speak, and we got to come up with the right direction. But I agree with Will in doing it through special exception at this juncture.
Will, do you want to add anything to that?
And if I could add, that would be permitted, the B1, B2, and the LOR. And that would include Route 25, 111, and 34.
Okay, Will, do you have anything else to add to that overview?
No, I think Rick's overview was very good. I do, though, if you have some opportunity tonight to talk about some of the big picture items that we had discussed and get some insights from the Commission on those, so that when we go back into the Subcommittee, we have some of that insights as we put this together.
All right, well, let me call the Commissioners that are not on the Subcommittee for a little bit of direction as to the things that I mentioned earlier. As far as location, as far as freestanding, as far as size of apartments, studio, one-bedroom. Start with Ryan Condon. Do you have any feelings on those issues?
Yeah, I mean, I know you had mentioned, you were saying apartments, but it's definitely mixed-use. So I see that, you know, we have, where was it, 45% needs to be commercial use, at least, of the floor space.
Ryan, I would suggest that you forget any draft you've seen.
Okay.
And just give, I think what would be most helpful for staff and the Committee would be more of a, how you, if you had all the control and you were going to write the regulation and you were going to put mixed-use into Monroe, what are the big things that are most important to you?
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I like the idea of mixed-use. I don't like the idea of freestanding, just apartment buildings in town. So I'd want them to definitely be a mixed-use property with commercial and residential. I'm okay with minimizing the size of the units, so we don't have, you know, kind of way too much cluster within the units, whether it be making them one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, something along those lines. And besides that, I think I'd like to add some sort of, I just thinking of the meetings we've had. I feel like there was a lot of talk about going forward, people wanting to try to make the town more walkable. We're always talking about sidewalks, but it's not always just sidewalks. Sometimes it's where there'd be walking trails and stuff like that. So maybe something added to the mixed-use that kind of promotes that in some way, whether it be sidewalks or some other, you know, village, community-like area you can make within these mixed uses. Because ideally, you're going to have people, in my thought process, living and doing this in the same location, whether it be living above a business they work in or, you know, living and going downstairs to a restaurant or to something. And then the ability to kind of, you know, walk as opposed to needing to drive and park seems to be an aspect of mixed-use I like. That's about it.
Thank you, Ryan. Rob?
All right, this is obviously a biggie, and as of right now, I'm kind of torn on this one. I realize that the trends today are moving towards apartments and condo-style living. But I do think that we need to keep Monroe's character in line. We need to keep an eye on what we're exactly doing and how it's going to change the character of our town. I fear that a good portion of our commercial base will end up residential, which, you know, we lose a lot of revenue and we take on a lot of expense as a town at that point. Obviously, extra costs involved in schooling and that kind of thing. So one of my big, big concerns, I realize that we have to evolve and we have to kind of meet the demands of people today and how they want to live. But at the same time, we do got to keep perspective on the character of this town. And I do truly believe that it's going to change the character of the town. I'm not saying I'm against it, but it is going to change things.
Do you have any thoughts about how you might, some kind of bigger picture ideas of how to maintain character?
Well, I haven't been a part of the Subcommittee, so I haven't been involved in this in any depth. Yeah, that would be something that I feel we would need to explore at length before I think I would want to be voting on this.
Rob, just to maybe help you a little bit. This is not going to go like everywhere a commercial building is. So it's not like all of a sudden you're going anywhere and everywhere above a commercial building. Some of these are, I mean, we can always, we can always adjust it to certain areas or current buildings that kind of have that, that look to the, to the, to the mixed-use look already, you know? But it's not going everywhere, so it's not like all of a sudden you have a commercial property and then you're going to pop up an apartment building above it.
Yeah, these are details I'd like to see, you know? I'd like to see where and what our thoughts are on what we're thinking about placing on these areas.
Rick made a great point in Subcommittee. It's very nice to see the map. So you can kind of get a feel of, hey, it's going to be, you know, do you want it between XY, XYZ, A, B, you know what I mean? So sometimes, Rick is 100%, Rick made a great point in Subcommittee on Mondays. It's really nice to have a map in front of you to kind of see, see how we looked at it in Subcommittee before we brought it to you guys to talk about.
Yeah, and staff's going to provide a list of locations. We talked to Mike today, and we'll provide locations for the Commission to visit. We can do it jointly with a couple Commissioners, or you can do it independently. That's your call. But as you know, a pitch is worth a thousand words. And there are some local examples right down in Trumbull on 25 in a Newtown.
And I would suggest that, you know, the Internet's a great thing. You guys can do your own little search and see different housing developments that are mixed-use throughout the country to get ideas of what that looks like physically. And, you know, you can pull ideas from what works for you, that what would represent Monroe. So you can do that at your leisure and feed the Committee as you see fit.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
All right, Ron, I haven't heard from you.
So first, let me just say my fully charged iPad is in the red right now. So if I blurb off, I'll have to sign back in with something else. But I think if we, if it's a new construction, we'll have to prove that correct. So if somebody wants to put 30 apartments above a huge strip mall, we'll be able to say yes or no before it even gets started, right?
Well, yes. However, if it's in the regulations that they're allowed to do X, Y, and Z, it's hard to then, once an application is in, to say, no, you can't do X, Y, and Z. You know what I mean?
I think there's certain buildings, especially older ones in town, up on 25, yeah, 25, right down in the center, that probably have some pretty cool-looking apartments above it. I think my concern would be parking in the front of the building instead of having some entrance in the back and parking in the back. So it's away from the storefront. You know, everything's, it's going to be, every building is different for what I would want to say should be for one and not for the other.
And that's the aspect, the difficulty of writing regulations, because we're writing a regulation for all the properties. So the regulations have to accommodate different scenarios that you want to protect from, what you want to achieve, so that you can achieve it with, you know, most lots to the highest degree possible.
Great. And Ron, to your point, Francisco, the consultant, is going to be participating in this exercise. Because he's going to be making recommendations to the full Commission. I personally believe that the Stepney area has unique features and should have its own zone there. But something down the road, and Francisco wants to talk about that, you know, after we do the questionnaire and then we have the town-wide meeting.
Okay. I think maybe if there is some type of regulation for what business it is, you know, you're talking Stepney and 25, which is great. I live in there, 111, so I'm thinking the pizza place with the girls' dance studio next to it, having a guy with an apartment above it that has four other guy friends over. And I don't know, you think about things like that, that would be a concern. The type of business it is, the privacy of that business, and then getting maybe the wrong person to live above it.
No, you're right, and that's why you have to have the appropriate standards.
Well, hold on a second. We don't judge who goes in and out of these. We're not the renters. So it's like, I get you, like, I understand what you're talking about, like, hey, we don't, you may, you may not like the idea above a, above a dance studio. But we're not, we can't control who the landowner rents these places out. And, you know, I, that's just, you know, we're not, we're not the owners of most of these properties, so it's hard to.
Well, I think that's Ron's point. I think that maybe is concern.
No, and I understand, but at the end of the day, there's a, there's a need for this. And we can't just, we can't, as a Commission, just all of a sudden turn around and be like, well, you know, there's a, there's a bad person that potentially could go into the spot. Like, we don't control, we don't vet the applications for the rentals, you know? Like, I understand that certain locations would work better than others. I get that. But we also have to have an open mind to, to also trusting some of these property owners that they will do the right thing. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's the problem. That's what Will says. It's hard when you, to make sure you're efficient.
It's extremely difficult, especially when you have a town that's been established for so long. And now a town that doesn't have mixed-use, that, that has a need for mixed-use, that, you know.
I can think of a lot of buildings in town.
Ten years ago, the POCD 10 years ago called for, called for mixed-use in Monroe.
Right, and I can see a lot of buildings in town that would be great with apartments.
Correct.
Also, Commissioner, there's also another component which is very important. We're going to have to quantify how many dwelling units could conceivably go town-wide. Because when we make referrals to the Police Department, Board of Ed, et cetera, they're going to want to know what the total numbers can be. You know what happened in Trumbull? You know, that's where Barbara lives, and that became an issue. So we do have to quantify it, so you know what the maximum's going to be. And then, of course, you can also regulate how many in any calendar year. So there's a lot of variables you can do.
I have a question, though, for you guys. And will, will there be a, 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 um, great question, huh? I can't even get it out of my mouth.
Yeah, pretty good.
Will there be, obviously, there'll be added use to the septic systems and stuff like that. So how do we go about, that's something I'm assuming we'd have to figure out as well, correct?
Yeah, that's in the red, yeah.
We don't have sewers, so everything's going to be a septic system, so.
Exactly, so that's why I'm saying, like, if we all of a sudden say, building X, you can have five apartments of two bedrooms. We also have to be considerate of the septic system on some of these properties, correct? Or am I wrong? I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking.
I mean, the problem with doing like build-out analysis, what Rick is suggesting, is that when it's on septic, we don't really know all the capacity potential of a property. If it was a sewer, it's a little different. You have a sewer plant, it can handle so many millions of gallons of debt. So the septic, obviously, is going to be a consideration that they have to provide for all the uses on property. And residential uses tend to be a higher septic user than an office or a retail establishment. So it also kind of self-limits in some respects, but it also will then limit your commercial. You have apartments.
Right, so, okay, so that was kind of my.
Yeah, and Bruno, too. And Bruno, to continue with your issue, we'll be talking to the Health Department. We'll zero in on locations that the Commission wanted to get an idea. We also know sites where developers want to do mixed-use, and they know the numbers already. So we'll be sharing that with the Commission.
Well, yes, but if you're building a new building, obviously, that, that's simple, right? You're just going to, you're going to adequately, adequately supply yourself with a septic system that fits what you're using. I'm talking about a building that currently exists.
Yeah, the older one. You're absolutely right.
It's the same thing, Bruno. It's no different whether it be residential or someone's going from an office or a retail store to a restaurant. The restaurant's going to have a higher septic output. They're going to have to show the Health Department that they can accommodate the increase flow coming from the change of use.
Okay, so that's kind of, that's kind of a buffer for us, then, kind of.
Well, in some ways, because we have self-imposed limitations of just having septic. Not the greatest oil system in the town.
Thanks for losing Ron.
Will?
Yes.
Doesn't that, if they don't meet the capacity, then they can't put up as much, so we really have nothing to worry about for that. Right?
Well, I don't know if that's the way to look at it. The way I would look at it is, it doesn't matter whether it's a residential use, commercial use, a mix of residential, commercial use, whatever the uses are. Not just new, but as they go forward and they change them, they're going to have to meet Health Department requirements for septic disposal. And they're going to have to build the systems and have the capacity to handle whatever it is that's going to get approved. Nothing is going to get approved or built, whether it be a retrofit, new construction, or a renovation. Nothing is going to get approved or built, whether it be a retrofit, new construction, or a renovation that doesn't have, you know, those, that adequate septic system, that adequate water system, that adequate parking, you know, so on and so forth.
So you're proposing for us to do this as like a mixed use kind of thing, regulation?
Well, it's really more of a regulation that introduces the apartment use into a commercial center. And the language will all address how much residential, how much commercial. It will talk about all those issues in the standards for introducing apartments into a commercial property.
Yeah, parking standards, yeah, everything.
All right, so we, so doing it as overlays, though, we don't have, we don't have more control?
I, I don't really think so. I mean, we can even build into the special exception permit a stepped process, which, which some of the overlay zones might have done. The overlay zone is just telling you where it can go.
Right.
And by us saying, if we're, if we're really focusing on the B1 and the B2 and maybe the LOR, that's what you're saying, in the sense, that's, that's an overlay, if you will, I mean,
Right.
saying it's allowed in those districts.
Right.
You know, an overlay, an overlay is more usually affected for something like an aquifer or floodplain, where you really, really want to control that area that has a specific concern. So you might have a commercial district and you have a, you have a floodplain. Well, in the floodplain portion of the commercial district, you don't want certain uses like gas stations and oil facilities and things like that that are going to be problematic in a flood condition. And the same thing with an aquifer. You don't want things polluting the water, so you might have higher restrictions for things. That's what an overlay zone really is for. I mean, you can use it for other things, but that's, that's the origin of an overlay zone.
Yeah. And commissioners, we're going to look at every site. You're going to see how we're going to quantify this. You'll see it. You know all the sites.
All right, so you're going to bring this to the subcommittee there, Rick?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay, and when do you think you're going to have that together?
Well, we're, we're envisioning multiple meetings, so, so what we're thinking of is we're going to go back in the subcommittee, put a little bit more frame on this. And as needed, I think we're probably going to want to come back to the commission with some, you know, similar discussion we had tonight on some of the bigger issues. And we might do that once or twice before we actually come back with an actual draft.
Okay.
And then, when you visit the various sites that we're going to suggest, you're going to go, that's what we want, or that's not what we want. Do the regulations guide us accordingly? Because you got to see the sites.
All right, then it sounds like the commission wants to move forward with mixed use. Whether it be an S C P or an overlay, we can decide that in the subcommittee. Rick's going to get out a list of sites to visit. Will said there's one down on, just past where Marissa's used to be, on the left in Trumbull. If you want to get a head start, take a look at that area. That's a mixed use area. So is that correct? Is that what we want to do? Move forward with this in the subcommittee? I guess it is.
Yeah, I'm good for it.
I'm all for it.
All right, good. Anything else, Will or Rick, you want to talk about regarding this?
No, I think we covered it, yep.
I'm good.
All right, then, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, correspondence. Haven't received any other correspondence.
Nor our staff.
No. Any commissioners have any report that they would like to bring forward? I have, no, I have nothing else, you know. Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, oh, Commissioner Mayini, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Ambrose II.
Well, I have a motion and a second, so this meeting is now adjourned at 9:28 PM.